Needs a gavel.
Oh yeah, really tripping up the acting mayor.
Well, it's their new year, you know, we're not used to this, so.
Well, I think there are less than a hurry.
January third, two thousand twenty-three at five thirty, we'll call this meeting in order, we'll stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Next order of business is we'll have to appoint an acting mayor, since our mayor isn't here right now, so with that.
I'll make a motion that we appoint Jeff Gondak as acting mayor.
And I'll second.
We have a motion on the table with a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. We now have the oath of office for our new newly elected official.
I, Deb Mathewitz.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the state of Minnesota.
The Constitution of the state of Minnesota.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of the office of council member.
And I will faith- and that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of the office of council member.
Of the city of Foley, county of Benton, state of Minnesota.
The city of Foley, county of Benton, state of Minnesota.
To which I have been elected to the best of my knowledge and ability.
To which I've been elected to the best of my knowledge and ability.
Congratulations.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Ah, next item of business is approve the agenda.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Consent agenda.
Make a motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Update on wastewater regionalization project. Mark Patton-Fuss, Sarah Brunn.
Okay, Mayor and Council, we decided to take this one, we did wrap up work for the time being. But we do have a payment application, this one is three hundred and twenty-one thousand, five hundred and seventy-three dollars and forty-eight cents. And that brings the total balance to finish at about seven point seven seven nine million, so making good progress, a whole nother construction cycle yet to go. Maybe I'll ask Public Works Director to just to comment on what they're planning on doing when they resume work.
They might come back this winter, late winter and work on lift station, they can do lane, do that and start some of that stuff. So then maybe they never got across the swamp behind the Broadway lift station, so we gotta do that.
And then I'll also comment, we are working through the permit process with the order control structure with the county, and we may have some more information on that and some, there's some items that the county is working on with us. On getting that permit approved and through, so there'll be some more information coming, but just want to make sure you aware if you do see some discussions at the county level. That's simply because that is not in our jurisdiction, that property is actually in the county, and so there's some different processes that we have to work through to get that approval.
Any discussion?
So there could be another application for payment.
It'll be three months at least.
Okay, alright. Because it sounds like if they do anything, they're just gonna work on what the Gulf, Gulf lift station or something?
You know, it won't come till April then.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
They will definitely let us know when they're gonna start again, yeah. Looking for a motion to approve the payment.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Advocates for Health, AED presentation. They're not here.
I talked to Mr. Vogel today, and he wasn't sure he was gonna make it depending on the weather. Being he's not here, we just said we could move it to February or March to present and discuss. He provided some information in the packet, and he wanted to show you a demo unit, they have a couple of them in the area, so it might be best if we just bring him back at a future meeting.
Yeah, I'm in favor of that, the information is very, very interesting, I had no idea how these things work. And didn't know that they worked in the wintertime, but the way they are set up, they're heated and whatever, so it's, yeah, quite interesting. I believe we got, what, two, three in town right now?
Yeah, and the reason he wanted to present to the council is he's just wondering if the council would be interested in partnering on additional locations in the community. And what that would look like, how that would work, you know, they help also find funding to provide for those units, and it's really something that they hope they can work collaboratively with, you know, multiple entities to make these available.
I had heard one time that the Lions were probably looking at putting another one up somewhere in town. That was a while ago, so I don't know where they're at there.
Yeah, that's very possible, I know he's reached out to a couple of different community organizations, so, but it's also, I think he, how he explained it to me is, the city owning a lot of public property is a good partner in that we might have locations that we can put them on, you know, and work out something to have them located, so.
And along with that, they do provide the signage and where they're located, correct?
Yeah, usually what happens, they put them up and then we help maintain them.
Yep. Well, I believe if it saves one life, it's well worth it.
Yeah.
I make the motion we table this until our next meeting.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second, all, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next item, two thousand twenty-three annual appointments.
If I could. I did reach out to the mayor-elect, and one position he did ask to be considered for would be the Personnel Committee. He had no other concerns or comments on the rest of the appointments, so he was okay if we wanted to proceed with filling those positions.
On the listing we have, there wasn't anything there that we, that we had to fill, is there?
You need to fill the positions that say council representative.
Okay.
So that would be Benton Economic Partnership, Library Board. And then EDA, and then the Personnel Committee. We can have another on the Planning Commission if that was, you know, desired, but, well, actually Deb's on already, so never mind, we couldn't, I forgot about that.
Is that gonna be a problem if we wait until we fill the next council seat?
Well, that's up to you, I don't want you to wait too long, because we do need to make some of the other appointments, like the, the banking things and those things, but yeah. If there is something that you would like to wait on, we can discuss that. Or if there's just something we just maybe don't have a consensus on, maybe you need a couple more members to find a consensus, that's fine, too.
Yeah, like the Library Board or whatever, that isn't a must right now, is it?
No, I, I mean, they'll just run without, that was a new thing, adding that council rep, that was something we discussed with them, just to stay more connected.
Well, the first order would be Benton Economic Partnership.
Yep, those meetings are usually on Thursday mornings, quarterly. I attend them, but it's always good to have a council member if they can attend them, or if I can't, to stay connected with, with that entity, that's a very well-attended meeting, and.
Is that, is that here, or?
It rotates, a lot of times it's in Sauk Rapids.
Okay.
But just want you to know, it's usually on a Thursday morning.
Thursdays usually?
Yep, quarterly.
Who do we have on there now, or don't we?
It used to be Gerard Bettendorf.
Okay. I don't have a problem, I won't do.
Okay.
Next one will be Library Board. That one.
They usually meet on, I think it's Thursdays, and they're as, it's usually like Wednesday or Thursday, and they're in the evenings, usually like four or five o'clock. They, they kind of talk amongst themselves, I think, when they schedule the meetings, because they also work with Great River staff.
You don't have a problem with it?
No, I'd be more than willing.
Now, with Deb being on the Planning Commission already and being a council representative, how does that fall into place?
That's why we can't, you and her could both serve, because we have three community members, that's okay. I was, I forgot about, you were a council member, so I misspoke earlier in the meeting, but, no, that would be fine, because we still have three others. It's when we drop, we do not want the council to have a quorum on that committee.
Did Rosalie retain her seat?
Yes, she's asked to retain her spots on Planning and the Library Board, which worked out, because we do have vacancies. But she's still in an existing term, that's why she's not on the list.
Economic Development Authority?
This, this meets as needed, and it's usually right before the City Council meeting on Tuesday, if it's needed, so like at four thirty, five o'clock.
What type of issues do they?
So they make recommendations when we do, like, for example, maybe a business subsidy, or any type of economic development financing that we might pass through, they, they review and make recommendations to the City Council on those activities.
I would be willing to go there.
You have two, two council members?
Yep, Jeff's currently on it, so he's listed. So this would be replacing Gerard Bettendorf, who was on it prior, but it needs to have two council members.
Any other questions on this? Looking for a motion to approve, while we do have Jack as a council, Jack Roche, the mayor, as our, on the Personnel Committee, as our council representative. So with that in mind, looking for a motion to approve the appointments.
So.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
And I'll just add too, if we get another member in and somebody wants to swap something out, you can always make that change, too, as a council.
Mayors and, mayors' comments in open forum, with that in mind, all those wishing to speak in the open forum must sign up on the sheet on the back table of the council chambers. Open forum comments are limited to two minutes per speaker. City council meetings observe Robert's rules of order, the public must obtain permission of the mayor before addressing the council. Individuals who are noisy or unrelated do not have the right to remain in the council chambers and may be removed. Thank you. First name Pamela Visner. Step up to reporting, please, state your name and address.
Pamela Visner, six hundred Broadway Avenue, Foley, Minnesota, five six three two nine. Now I just have to ask you if I can speak, or what?
You can speak.
I can speak, okay.
You have two minutes.
Okay, so I'm coming in, and I don't like to complain, because I know we all work hard, but I've been driving down my mom and dad's road, and I drive a lot of roads in Foley, because if you don't know, I drive every night with my son, we have a nightly ride, but here's the thing, the road in, that road has been, is awful. Like, I get, even when my dad goes across the road, it's scary to have him go across the road, because it's not plowed good. It needs to be gone through again and again, and I, I was told that it's because nobody drives down that road, which I, there's a lot of roads that nobody drives down, but that road is bad, and I know that people drive down that road, because I drive down that road. And I know there's more than just me going down, up and down that road many times during the day. At this point, I just, we pay taxes to have our roads clean, we need to, even on a day that it's nice out, we need to get back out there and scrape the roads, I mean, even when I'm at work, and things are bad, or, and I'm at home and I'm, things are bad, and we need to go into work, we have to do it. I get it's not always the funnest thing to do, but our city payers, we pay a lot for taxes, we pay a lot to get our roads clean, and it should be done. If I don't shovel my sidewalk, I get a thing that says I'm getting a fine. So if I'm getting a fine for something that I didn't do, I want my money back for something that the city didn't do. And I'm just at the point where it should be safe for my mom and dad to walk down the road, it should be safe for Mrs. Ross to walk down the road, and every other eighty-year-old person that lives on that road. And I'm not just talking about my road, I'm just, at this point, I'm concerned about my parents and my family, but even on my road, even Gerald the neighbor, he walks on that road, and it's not always, it's not always clean the way it should be, and I get the city roads are, main roads are clean, and they look good, and, but the ones that are, the side roads are not getting done the way they should. So that's my complaint, I don't want to complain, but I have to, so that's it.
Thank you. Deborah Olson.
Deborah Olson, six hundred Dewey Street. I had a couple of questions under the bills listed, why is Nationwide and Pacific Life listed as being paid out? And specifically, what kind of insurance is being bought with that money? And then also, I'm very appreciative of the Advocates for Health and bringing in the AEDs. The concern I have is a lot of times when there's funding out there, many times cities are allotted X amount for X amount that are in your city, they have listed Coburns, the Legion, they also have Goodfellows, which is not Foley, and Jack and Jim, so my question, and I've sent an email, does this preclude the city from additional installations of AEDs? And then the other question I had about that is, because there is a cost associated with installation, I understand that they've helped with funding, but there is also a yearly maintenance fee, and then who pays for that? Is it coming out of the city budget, or where the location that it's placed at, or how is that gonna work? And then, just double checking, a reminder about that signage across Highway twenty-three, have we heard any more about that? But I'll be happy to.
Thank you. Department of Reports, Police Department, Chief McMillan.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, I provide you with the stat report for the month of December, calls were down, we had three hundred and twelve calls for the month of December, but that is not our lowest for the whole year. And I provided you a lot of other graphs to go along with it, to show you that it, calls are increasing. Compared to last year, we had six hundred and seventy-three more calls than last year. And then in the graphs that I provided, there's a bar graph that breaks down the types of calls, and then the line graph of over the months, and you can see how there's only two months that we were lower than last year, so. When looking, some of the things, driving complaints and speeding was down, people driving without a valid license, that was up. Suspicious activities, and that was up, domestics and assaults were down, which is good, because those are our most dangerous calls that we respond to. City ordinances were up to twenty-four, that is for the sidewalk shoveling. Just a reminder that people need to shovel their sidewalks, they need to be clear of ice, snow, compact snow, everything, so. So a lot of letters went out to those, so, and the people respond to the letters, so we have good response to them. So, because the ordinance states they have twelve hours from the last snowfall, we always, I give longer than that, obviously, so. But just a reminder that people need to get out there and keep their sidewalks clear, so. But other than that, I have nothing else to really say, we're continuing off, I know when I left work on Monday, we had eighteen calls for the year already, so we're keeping on busy pace, so.
On the parking, you haven't had anything to be towed, have you?
We have not had to tow yet, there was a few that got a couple warrant, or a couple citations on them, two nights in a row, but then they got moved, so.
With the approval and the consent agenda to start the process for a part-time officer, what do we look, what kind of timeframe are we looking at for that?
I have to post it, and there are a few people that our officers have in mind that do have a post license, that they are looking at going to apply. So usually I leave it open for about two weeks, just with mail and everything, and trying to get that, get those applications in. And then we'll be looking at interviews, probably beginning of February, middle of February, and then hopefully have a list to bring to the March meeting, so.
And how many officers are we looking at to hire?
For sure, one, to give us more, because what, the problem we're running into is, well, a lot of the evening guys, if they want to take off, there's, they can't find somebody to make it, and I have to wa- make sure that they're not getting over the allotted hours for that pay period, so that's where we're, the issues we're running into. And just to have another person who can help pick up a shift when needed, and so we're not having to remap everyone's schedule. Because Jay, and I did talk to Oscar McDonald, and he is looking at staying on with us, even though he's like, well, it may be only the two, minimum two shifts, which we require, but he's a good, very good asset for us, so I'm very happy that he's staying on, so.
So in a total month, how, how many hours do part-time get in?
In, well, they can upwork up to fourteen hours a week. And right now, they usually work the weekends, say sixteen, Saturday and Sunday are both eight-hour days right now, in the summer, they get longer, because it's summer, we're busier, so. So they're looking at sixteen to twenty hours. And that's with nobody taking off. And a lot of our full-timers are getting up, they're on their comp and vacation, that they have to use it, too, so.
And how many part-time do we have?
We currently have five.
I can't keep up with them.
Yeah, it is.
They're in one door and out the other.
Yep, unfortunately for small agencies, that's what it is.
Okay, thank you.
You're very welcome.
Anything else? Moving on, City Engineer Jared Griffith.
Me, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, in your packet, there are a couple of things for tonight, first being an update from MINDOT for the two thousand five twenty-three project. There was a, you should have in your packet there, an invoice for the change order one, that was basically our reduction in all the utility work from, from Ninth to Lord. And that, through MINDOT's processes, and we have that, have the invoice here, and that total is six hundred and eleven thousand, three hundred and thirty-one thousand, three hundred and thirty-one and three cents. Also, in there is an invoice for the outstanding balance, and this is the original construction costs of this project minus that change order, and then the difference between what the city has already paid is what is presented here as this outstanding balance of forty, or sorry, fifty-four thousand, eight hundred and thirty-seven dollars and twenty cents. Sarah, do we need a?
I just wanted this to run through the council as a separate motion, just to make sure you understand, we're making that change order that we passed quite a few months ago, is finally being billed by MINDOT, so we need to pay this invoice.
Does it have to do with what we canceled out?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay.
Correct.
And, alright.
So I just wanted a motion to approve that separately, just that it was.
They just raised the price on the.
Yes.
Electrical. I love it, yeah.
So, yeah, just a motion to make sure that we can get that check cut.
Don't have a lot of choice, so I'll make a motion, Mr. Mayor, that we pay that outstanding.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carried.
Thank you, and the second thing I have in the packet is an agreement for additional construction engineering services for the two thousand five twenty-three project. As we're all aware, that project has been extended to next year, and gone over, I guess. And our original, in the original service agreement that we had with the city, we were estimating and assumed six week, yeah, six weeks of construction for our utility work. Due to contractors' means and methods, and let's just say a complex staging of this project, that's been over, and we are currently estimating about ten weeks to complete all the city utility work. That includes what we've done already, plus, plus what we have for next year. And the agreement before you is, is our hourly, hourly fee for, for the additional time of nineteen thousand, five hundred dollars, we are currently estimating that at right now. I'd like to remind the city here that we should be in our expecting liquidated damages with this project from the state to the city, and that, that is, the intent of that is to help pay for costs such as these. Now, I don't know what that, what that liquidated damages will be getting, we haven't got that information yet, but.
Well, this all includes the crosswalk lighting?
This does not, no.
So that's over and above yet?
I guess, yes, but I'm not sure exactly where that is gonna fall under SEH, in the city.
We.
So we had that, we had that budget to.
Yes.
Yep. But I think what we did, we did find out is there is funding, we were awarded funding for those, the equipment itself. So there should be funds available to pay for that. So there should be funds available to pay for that portion. What might be extra would be design, and that's what we're still trying to get a, exactly what the state needs from us to try to minimize the costs, whatever we have to do with that.
If that wasn't all figured in there initially, design, application, install, whatever?
It was dis-
That wasn't in the contract?
It was discussed in the construction meetings, we did pull some minutes. It was never put into the plans. So MINDOT's hired an outside consultant to do the engineering. It was discussed at the meetings, but it never was put into the plan.
So how did this happen?
That's a good question, and we haven't really been able to get a straight answer on that.
So this could cost more than what we initially thought it might to?
Correct, it could.
And there is funding there supposedly?
We have remaining funds in our grant and direct appropriation dollars that should pay for the cost of the equipment. You know, we, there is some matching on the grant, but then there's some direct appropriation. So we will utilize that to the fullest extent we can. But it doesn't always qualify for like the design and those portions. We have a meeting with MINDOT tomorrow that we might get some more information on, a different, unrelated meeting that we'll ask to as well.
So we don't look for any of that to be completed till spring?
Yeah, that, that will not be completed till spring, they're not coming back until then.
Summer. Summer.
Summer, yeah.
Yeah.
I guess my, my question is, I don't know how this, for all the planning that we did, starting in two thousand seventeen, I can't understand how this was missed.
Hey, I don't either.
And for us, for us as a city to have to pay extra for it, I'm, I'm having a hard time with that. I mean, that was one of the big issues that we first started with, is the signage and stuff, so.
As far as I was, I was more concerned with, I know.
Agreement is separate than that, you just hear, okay.
Alright, but-
Yeah, no, I, I get where you're coming from, yeah, yeah.
But with this new contract, okay, you would also be involved in that, correct?
Uh, we would come back with that. This is just to complete the city utility work that we have talked about since, when I believe our agreement was in December? No, it was closer to, closer to March, but. The reason why it's not in here is because we don't know if it's going to be MINDOT doing the work or if it's going to be the city and their pick of a consultant to do the work. That's, that's why I don't want to have it in here, because I don't know what S E H, what kind of benefit S E H will be providing at that time. I will certainly probably, it'll be talked about at progress meetings and I will be attending those. But I don't know if we're going, if S E H will be doing the design or the actual inspection, so.
I just was confirming I was understanding, we're going to lean on MINDOT as much as we can because it should have been handled on the initial plans. That's what we have not gotten a straight answer on. But you are correct that it's a concern and there could be a potential cost.
Looking for approval or a motion to approve the additional engineering for Highway twenty-three project?
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Public Works Fire, Mark Pamphas.
Good evening. I don't think I have anything specific for you guys tonight. You know what we've been up to, so. Unless you have something for us. Unless you got something for me, I'm good.
I guess with retirement of Larry NATO, will the Fire Department be reaching out for a plaque or would that be?
Fire will take care of that, yeah.
Okay, okay. Anything else for Mark? Administration, Sarah Brun.
Quickly, we have a joint Planning Board meeting at six thirty that will discuss the winery project out in the orderly area. So that's, even though it doesn't seem like we can be outside, it's still fun to consider that. And then the other item I just wanted to bring up is we have a Moody's rating call. Kind of an unusual circumstance. We got selected, only eight percent of entities did, we got selected for a potential upgrade, which is great. But we have to go through a credit review process, which, answering questions, polling reports, kind of a mini interrogation in my opinion, on the city's position. We may or may not get upgraded, it won't affect us negatively, but they liked some things they saw that they want to take a look at us to potentially give us an upgrade, which would save us money with future financing. So it's a good thing, will require some work, we have the first conference call this week. And I'll let you know what happens regarding that.
The only cost we're looking at is our labor that we got into this.
Yeah, it'd be our time, staff time. So it's basically myself and our accountant that do the majority of the work on it. But, yeah, it's, it's worthwhile to do it, because the last one, the last financing we did, we got, we got a credit upgrade a few years ago, and that saved us like sixty-four thousand right out of the gate, so it was worth it.
Yeah, that can happen, yeah.
Yeah, and that would be pretty cool if we got another upgrade, that doesn't happen very often within that short period of time, so. Doing something right, which is good. And that's all I have, we got plenty of other things, so.
Anything for Sarah? Old business. New business. We have adopted a resolution to, on two thousand twenty-three dash zero-two, declaring a city council vacancy. What, looking for direction on what the council believes we should do.
If I could, at a, just at a minimum, you should adopt that resolution because you're basically stating we have a vacancy, we need to do something about. So before we leave tonight, we should do that.
So, we haven't had any applicants thus far or applicant, we?
No, we have not put anything out there.
Okay.
You, as a council, need to decide how you wish to proceed. And I think I kind of outlined what we've done in the past, in the memo.
So this motion is strictly to say we've got a vacancy?
Correct.
Correct.
And then we move to how we're going to frame it and when the special election would be?
Well, and that's up to you, but we have a vacancy per statute, which I included. If there's less than two years remaining, when you, you can make an appointment. I, from a staff level, would recommend that, just because of the costs and the time to do an election. It is completely up to you if you would like to do an election. Just understand you will have costs and time associated with that. If you do appoint, you should not appoint until the next meeting because there needs to be less than two years. Two years from now when the next seat would come up would be actually two years and two days, so. I would recommend you discuss it, figure out how you want to handle it, and then we can do it at a future meeting. But that's just my recommendation.
Well, the first order of business is looking for a motion to adopt Resolution two thousand twenty-three dash zero-two, declaring a city council vacancy.
I see, I move that we adopt twenty twenty-three dash oh-two, declaring the vacancy.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. The discussion on a council member vacancy, I believe we should have the mayor here also.
I think, I think, yeah. That's what I'd like to wait till February, then maybe contact him and talk about this, so.
Would you like to wait or would you like to put out an advertisement in the meantime?
I would, I would think we should.
I mean, we can do that, you don't have to make the decision.
We have enough time without that council member, don't we? We don't want to be sitting here with vacancy in March and April.
Correct.
If we can prevent that.
Correct.
Right, right, right.
So I think.
You could just advertise for like letters of interest.
I mean, like if something happened now, we couldn't even have a meeting because we wouldn't have quorum. With, with what we got right now, as we said.
Right, yeah.
Would you like me to just publish it in the paper and our social media and website and ask for letters of interest?
I think we have to.
Okay.
We've done this before when, in years past, when we had a vacancy, so.
Did we have any write-ins?
We did have write-ins. I'd have to go back to the register. We had write-ins and then we had two people that ran that were not elected, two.
Okay.
But yeah, I could go back to look at that.
Just to give us some input.
I can, I can pull that, because I do have the record.
Appreciate that.
Any further discussion?
Well, you, I want to put Mark on the spot a little bit. Overall, the roads have been very good until, what did happen to Carpenter? I mean, I, I do drive, do it, drive around, and that's it, that probably was-
It's not a primary road, you have, and we can do it, but you got to remember, all you two voted to cut the Public Works budget for next year.
Yeah, no, I just, I just-
So it's only going to get worse.
That's basically what it was, was traveled on a lot before you got it plowed, basically.
That's been one of the earliest roads plowed.
Okay.
Part of the problem is, I'm not going to pick on anybody. I have these places, Carpenter's the road, they got to park on the road right away and I can't get through a twenty-eight-foot road with my wing. I have a road, I'm not going to say the person's name, he's retired, lives on Broadway, he puts both his cars out on the road right away. And once I see those cars, I come, I leave and I don't come back till later. So.
So you can only do-
You want to put your cars on the road and go in and get in the way, you can be the last road plowed.
Okay, no, I'm just, I'm just curious, because like I say, I'm pretty pleased with-
Yep, a third of the time I go down Carpenter, I got to go around a vehicle.
And, uh.
So.
Even tonight, you guys are-
Complain, complain if you want to complain, but don't park your cars on the road till it's plowed then.
I mean, everybody's got to kind of help each other. Just curious.
Anything else? With that, looking for a motion to adjourn?
A move.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Meeting adjourned.